So, we are picking up on the worship service. And you may remember that we actually talked about the worship service of God's people a few chapters ago in Westminster Confession of Faith, right? And there was this funny thing called the Regulative Principle that we talked about. Right? And the Regulative Principle, in a nutshell, is simply talking about in our collective or corporate worship service, right? All of us gathered together Sunday morning and Sunday evening, is that we're not free to just do whatever we want, right? But we're only to do those things that God actually commands us to do, right? We're in the Scripture, we see these things that God's people are supposed to do, right? So, we pick up from the Scripture that His people gathered together are referred to as the "house of prayer." And when God's people gather together, we see them praying, right? And so, we go, "Oh, well, prayer probably ought to be, you know, one of the things that we include in our worship service." Why? Because that's something that God has commanded and set as an example for us. And so, as we go through that, we'd start picking up some other things. What are some of the other things that we might include on? These are things from God's Word where He commands us, or shows us, or tells us, "Hey, here are things that you ought to have in the worship service." What are some other things?
Singing.
Singing, right? He actually appointed singers of His people, that that was their full-time job, was singing and playing instruments, right? Good indication that that's something that we're supposed to be doing. What else?
Confession.
Confession. What are we confessing?
Two things: His glory, our need, our fault.
Yeah. We're confessing, we're agreeing with God that He's great and we're not. And then, the specificity of, "Here are ways that He's great, and here are ways that we're not," right? Sin, talking about ways in which we've failed God, right? What else do we find in the Scripture?
Proclamation.
Proclamation. Does this have an "I" here? No. Doesn't proclaim, but that's the way our language works. What else?
Forgiveness.
Forgiveness. Most of you will never go there, and that's fine. But there is a song in Hamilton where they move uptown and are dealing with the loss of their son, and Hamilton being an absolute horrific, terrible husband and father. And there's a song on forgiveness that just totally does me in every time I listen to it.
Oh, we need to get a little bit more of "Break Bread."
Break bread. Right? Holy kiss. Oops.
Greeting.
Greeting, right? Culturally appropriate greeting.
Offering.
Offering. Right? And so, as you go through this and look at these things, these are the kinds of things that ought to be the framework for us to say, "What do we do together?" Not simply, "This is what we've done for the last 20, 30, 50, 100 years," or whatever, right? Is, what does God's Word tell us that we ought to do in our worship service? Now, these things are going to look very, very different depending on a whole bunch of different things, in terms of who the people are gathered, what culture, what language, what, you know, all kinds of ways that that looks differently, okay? So, you may have noticed, if you've been here any of the last three weeks, some differences. Has anybody noticed any differences in Sunday morning?
Yes.
Right? Has anybody been troubled by that and thought, "What are we doing? What is this about?" It's okay. I know several are, and that's okay, right? So, that is, right? So, we wanted to just, the elders and I, talking through this, were wanting to provide a forum to be able to talk about this, discuss this, and for you to be able to raise questions, but for me to be able to explain what we're doing and why we're doing it, right? And it's not simply, you know, "Well, you know, this is a little boring, let's change it up a little bit," right? That's not how we approach the worship service at all, right? But there were some things here that we looked at and realized, "We're not really doing this kind of thing," right? So, in terms of confession and forgiveness, right? We've always been, as a church, very strong on proclamation, right? We teach the Bible without any apology. This is what God's Word says, and that's part of our tradition, right? That's a very, very good thing. But it's also grounded in the Scripture. It's not just tradition, it's, "This is what God tells us to do." And the fact that we haven't had much of confession or forgiveness expressed in the worship service officially doesn't mean that we don't have people who are confessing and experiencing forgiveness. That certainly has been happening, right? But one of the things that has not been as much a part of the warp and woof of what we do week in and week out has been missing. And so, one of the things that we're trying to do is to walk through that, and the elders together, talking, praying, thinking, you know, about those kinds of things, right? And at the same time, recognizing we're learning and on a discovery process ourselves, and that we don't want to do things of, "Hey, cool, look what I just learned this week in my Bible study, so we're going to totally change the service to reflect that." And then, the following week, "Oh, cool, I saw this new thing," and, you know, that that doesn't work well. So, a couple of things that I think are helpful in terms of framing this, or for us to think about that, ties in with what I was saying about the Passover paradigm, or the way of thinking and acting as a community, right? That through God saying, "Hey, you're going to sacrifice a lamb, and that lamb needs to be eaten up that evening, and not have any left for tomorrow." And so, if you're by yourself, or have a smaller family that can't do that, join in with another family, and that that became part of what the Hebrews did, right? That that became part of the every-year kind of thing. But then, that also opened up things for other expressions of that. And we find that not just in that once-a-year expression, but we also find that in terms of how they would do their ordinary week in and week out, things like harvesting, right? That they weren't supposed to harvest the whole of their field, but they were to leave the corners in certain places unharvested. Why? Right? Those gleaning, right? People who didn't have their own field. People that didn't have a way of having access to a harvest, right? So, when you go through the Scriptures with those kinds of eyes, you begin to see all these different places where God has put in their regular daily life ways of thinking about and considering others, and giving priority specifically to the covenant family, right? To the people of God in particular. Certainly welcoming the aliens, certainly welcoming people like Ruth, who were not part of the covenant community, but bringing them in. But to prioritize caring for those within the family first, and then, also looking outside. And that the more that that takes shape in our regular habits, that it begins to then inform and kind of trickle out into all kinds of other areas, right? Ruth and I had the incredible privilege with Andrew yesterday of getting to play Santa Claus, right? And so, we had these blessing trees, which, by the way, thank you, you guys did a tremendous job. And getting to take some of those blessings to some of these families that don't quite frankly have the means to do a lot of things, like have an extra meal. I was so thrilled that Ruth made a point of not just having canned vegetables, but saying, "No, let's give them fresh vegetables," right? Because there are a lot of families that they don't get fresh anything, right? And so, it was great to go to these families and be able to say, "Hey, Christmas dinner, we got you covered. Here's a turkey, here's all the sides, here's, you know, everything for your family to have a really neat Christmas dinner," right? Even with a pie, right? And, "Oh, presents for your kids." You don't have the means with which to buy presents for your kids. Totally taken care of, here are the presents, right? Let's give them to you so that you can share them with the kids. And, you know, we were even blessed in ways that we hadn't anticipated, that Colby was doing a fundraiser of selling oranges and grapefruit. And so, we were able to say, "Oh, by the way, we've got extra, here's some fresh fruit as well," right? But the point of those things is not for the pastor or the childcare center director to be able to be the Santa Claus and doing those things, as fun as that is, right? It's part of this warp and woof of us being a family that normally, regularly, in our collective time together, there is fellowship, there is welcoming in, there is greeting and blessing, and caring for, you know, one another, along with confession of sin and repentance, right? So, if you look at your tour of worship, you'll see some of these things that are very familiar in terms of what we do, other things that are familiar but have been moved maybe to a different position than what you're used to, and then, other things that are new. So, I'm going to focus just for right now on the new stuff. So, if you turn the page to the back of the first page, you'll see this little section called "Repenting Together by God's Grace." And you'll see those section titles that we've included on this that aren't normally in the order of worship, but that just in terms of our planning are helping us to kind of think through, what are the major pieces? Which of these things go together, and in what way? Because what we're trying to do in the corporate worship service of God's people is to walk people specifically through the gospel, right? That the gospel is not just the message that we communicate or proclaim, right? We do definitely want to make sure that we're doing that. But that by our actual lives together, we are ourselves walking through the gospel, and anybody who comes in from the outside were saying, "Come with us," right? And that it's this pilgrimage through the gospel, right? So, some people who have come from a Catholic background will say, "Oh, I recognize some of these things, right? This is, you know, this is more what I'm used to in terms of the order and the flow." And that's because, while sometimes we, as Protestants, will say, "Anything Catholic is bad, right? And we only do Protestant things," that that's, there is a lot that is wrong biblically with the Roman Catholic Church and hierarchy, right? There are specific things that the Reformers responded against. But sometimes, we throw the bad out with the good, right? And so, there are some things in the Roman Catholic Mass that the Reformers continued to use, right? Because in point of fact, they existed long before Catholic became Roman Catholic, right? So, if you look back to Augustine, who was not a Roman Catholic, he was part of the Catholic Church, the universal church, right? But before, you've got Rome established as what it is today with the Roman Catholic Church, okay? And so, there are some of those things that predated Roman Catholicism that have been part of not just the Roman Catholic Mass, but in point of fact, historically, have been part of the way that God's people have gathered together and worshipped Him from the time of the apostles, right? That we see carrying on and continuing. And one of those is this idea of repentance. That repentance is not just something that I do by myself, right? But that we, as a people, are to be repentant people. And sometimes, we get very confused in that, particularly as we think about and live out our lives of witness, right? So, oftentimes, there'll be times for me where I will do something stupid, or even immoral, or illegal, right? And then, think, "Ah, I sure hope that none of my non-Christian friends or neighbors saw me," right, with that. So, we'll take a little example of, not, this isn't something that I've had recently, but from time to time, I've been known to get a speeding ticket or some other run-in with the law. Oh, well, here's a good recent one. This was, I had lunch on Friday with Chief Blish, the police chief? And I realized to my horror, because I got there before he did, and I'm inside waiting on him to show up for lunch. And then, he shows up and pulls in right behind my Explorer. And then, immediately, I thought, "Oh, I just renewed my registration, and the ticket is, or the little sticker is on its way, but it's in the mail and not on the back of my Explorer." So, my Explorer is sitting there illegally past registration, and the chief police just pulled in right behind with a great view of my license plate. Ouch, right?
Did he notice?
If he did, he was kind and didn't say anything. I'm sure he noticed. He didn't necessarily know that it was my vehicle. So, oftentimes, we think that our witness to the watching world around us is to be us being completely godly. And that is, in point of fact, true. It's just only partly true, right? Because if that is the leading thing of what we're thinking about in terms of our witness to the world, it becomes very easy for us to fall into the pharisaical trap, right? And be so concerned with doing all of the right things and trying to live in good and godly ways. That's a good motive, right? But if that is all of what we're thinking, right? It can misshape us and crush us in ways that are not good, and cause us to crush other people, right? Because you need to get on board and do all of these things also, right? Whereas, I think the key hallmark thing of our witness to the watching world is actually from the Scripture to be repentance. We are the people who most on earth understand the horror of our sin, the absolute inability for us to keep God's holy, perfect standard. And understand that the gospel is all about grace because we cannot do what we're supposed to do. Doesn't mean we stop seeking to do those things, right? But that as we seek to do that, we're constantly running back to the cross, right? That this ought to be so much a part of our entire identity, right? That it is a travesty in my mind that so many non-Christians think, you know, "Oh, Christians, they're the ones who are the either do-goodies, right, the folks who are trying to do everything else, or the judgmental crowd, right? They're the ones that'll tell you everything that you are doing that's wrong," right? Whereas, within the Scripture, what we find is that God's people ought to be those who are most transparent about how we do wrong, and how Christ is the only one who saves us, right? And so, as a part of that, what we find in the Scripture is confession, right? God's people together, gather together, and they confess sins, right? And that the Scripture actually admonishes us and tells us that. Confess your sins one to another, right? Not so that you can look down on one another, but so that you can look up to Christ, right? So, let me just walk through this particular thing. And I know you can read, but I think it's just helpful for us to make sure that we're all getting the same message, and then, we'll have some time to discussion of these things. So, in this section of "Repenting Together," we have these, you know, six primary elements that we do every time that we're doing these kinds of things. And then, one that is as the occasion requires, okay? So, the first thing is scriptural call to repentance. This is where we, well, let me just read it. "Even as we take on our lips words of praise for this great God, we are confronted with the truth of Scripture that on our own we stand before Him as covenant breakers, worthy only of His wrath. The same gospel beckons us to come calling on His mercy. The biblical passage read should remind us of those realities," right? And so, with each of these things, we might seek to do that thing in various different ways, right? So, this might be just a Scripture passage, right? Reading one or two verses that deal with these kinds of things, right? Or, it may be something that is a paraphrase of that. Or, it may be historical kind of thing, something out of the Valley of Vision Puritan Prayers that I mentioned, or, you know, so we can pull from lots of different things to accomplish the same thing, but it's all grounded on this scriptural reality. And then, the idea is that we hear this truth, right? That we need to confess, that we need to repent, that God is holy and we are not, right? But that oftentimes, we are in places spiritually where we hear the truth of God and are not in a place where we go, "Yep, okay, great, boom," and we're ready to do it. We may respond and say, "Yep, I know that that's true. I know that that's what I ought to do," right? But I may be struggling, right, to do that. One of the things I love with Teen Challenge, having them be one of the ministries that we're involved in, is they come and share with us some of their life experience, right? And that for the addict, it is not as simple as saying, "Hey, drugs are screwing up your life, knock it off." "Oh, I never heard that before. Thank you so much. I'm done with drugs," right? And they walk out changed and never relapse again. That would be wonderful. But if you've struggled as an addict, or had a loved one who has, you know that that's not normally how that works, right? And so, the song of preparation is a way of God working graciously through His people together to not only remind us of the truth being read, but having to take it on your own lips to sing, to say what these things are, right? There's this principle of internalization, right? Where it's not just, "I know that that is true, but I've brought that in to myself, right? I've reckoned with that reality, agreed with it, and then, actually verbalized it myself," right? So, in counseling oftentimes, dealing with the addict just as an example, right? It's far more helpful if I don't tell them, "Hey, this is screwing up your life, you need to knock it off." But ask them questions to get them to say, "Man, this is screwing up my life, I really need to stop." Do you see how those are very different things, right? And so, the idea of singing those truths, right? "We sing of our need for forgiveness, of God's holiness and our sin, of the brutality of Christ's sacrifice." This is a prayer, as all songs in the worship service are. This is a prayer leading into confession that is designed to remind us of the depth and horror of our depravity, right? That we take it on our own lips. And there are some times when that is so powerful that I can't sing the words, that all I can do is weep as those words wash over me. Lots of times, in counseling, really difficult situations, people who are struggling with great things, and they'll say, "But pastor, I just can't come to the worship service." Do you know why they can't come to the worship service? Well, there may be, yeah?
They're undone.
They're undone, right? And so, there have been dozens of people through the years who've just said, "I can't come to the worship service because all I will do is bawl." And that's embarrassing, but also, they have a good heart in terms of saying, "I don't want to disrupt people. I don't want to distract people from the worship service." And if you're in that situation, please hear me. It's not a distraction. Oh, God, I would, I wish, I pray that every Sunday, we would have people in our congregation who are undone, who are bawling because the gospel is taking root. And they're wrestling, saying, "Oh, God, I'm not worthy." Do you know that that's the worship that God Himself has actually said, "This is good worship"? Do you remember Jesus's story of the Pharisee and the tax collector? The Pharisee said, "Oh, God, I'm so grateful. I'm so thankful to you that I'm not like this person and that person, and I don't do this, and I don't do that." Where the tax collector sat and wept. All he could manage to say was, "I'm not worthy. I'm not worthy." Guys, if that's not part of our worship service, we need to really ask ourselves some questions. And that by including these pieces, what we're doing is making room for those things. We're inviting folks in and saying, "This is good, this is right. Come and weep, come and wail. It's okay, this is a safe place, even though we are gathered together before the righteous, holy God." That in fact, this is what He encourages us to do. All right, so then, we hear the truth, we sing the truth, and then, we're called to a corporate confession where we take the difference between, "Yes, God, you're holy and I'm not," and singing that and working through that. But in the corporate confession or collective confession, I used to always say, "Corporate confession," and then, everybody thought I was talking about IBM. And that's not what, it's collective, it's plural, right? "All y'all" is the focus of who's doing this, right? That in this collective confession, we pray together, a scripted prayer confessing our sin, particularly as a people. The collective nature of this prayer helps us to realize and repent of our sins together, both by commission and omission. What are those things? What's a sin by commission? What we specifically did. "Lord, I robbed a bank, that's not okay," right? By committing it, this is what I've done, right? Omission, what does that mean? Right? We left undone. He said to feed the poor. I drove right by, right? So, both the things that we have done and the things that we have left undone, right? And that to do this, one of the things that I tend to do is to use kind of a monthly rotation using some confessions like Psalm 51 or Luther's Prayer. And the reason that I tend to do that is because I find that if we do the same one every week, right? It does become so familiar that we're not really hearing it. But what I've found is every four to six weeks, if we're praying a prayer like that throughout our time together, right? And it may take years, but those things become familiar enough to where, again, they start showing up in our other prayers. They start showing up in our thoughts and our conversation, right? That they're instructive, right? They accomplish the kinds of things that I'm finding in working out, right? That in my workouts, my workout partner forces me to do things that I don't want to do, that are painful, right? And that if I don't do those things, if I go and work out and just do the stuff that feels good, right? "Oh, endorphins, this is great." I'm not really working the parts that I need to work, right? And so, by having enough familiarity to those things, they begin to guide us and help us with internalizing those kinds of things, right? Then, so we say together, "This is how we've sinned." Now, one of the things that people will often balk at with that is, "Hey, I don't want to confess stuff that I haven't actually done," right? Now, that can come from a pharisaical kind of thing of, "Well, I didn't do that," you know. But it can also come from a place of brokenness to say, "I got enough things to confess, right, of what I have actually done, right? I don't need to take on and confess things that I haven't done." But the idea of a collective confession is, "I'm not just confessing things that I've individually done, I'm confessing things that we have done together." And again, as Americans, as individualistic people, that's one of the hardest things for us to get. That I may be faithful and true to my wife, but if one of you has had an affair, we have had an affair. That we see this again and again from the prophets, right? Those people that God called to go and tell His people where they had sinned, how they had sinned, to knock it off and to come to Him in confession and repentance. And those prophets repeatedly, in their prayers, pray things of confession and repentance for things that they individually didn't do, but that the king did, that the priest did, that the people did, right? That we are connected, that as a covenant community, this is how this works. That we are connected, that as a covenant community, this is how this works, right? Again, when the people were coming up out of Egypt and going to the Promised Land, and Achan, was it, who buried the stuff under his tent? Right? One guy. And... But yeah, but there were lots of people who didn't even know that he did any of that stuff, right? And so, "Wait a minute, you know, we're getting killed because this one guy sinned? What's that all about?" Well, you're part of the community, right? That part of it is, is that you maybe turned a blind eye, but part of it is, you had no idea that that was going on, but you didn't know because you're just in your own little citadel, doing your own little things, and you've not reached out to Achan or his family and gotten to know them. So you don't have any relationship to know what he's doing, right? Those sins of omission, right? Now, a lot of times, when we start pushing this and looking at all the various different ways of our sin, individually as families and collectively as a people of God, it's like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, whoa." You know, "So I'm responsible because so-and-so sinned, and I didn't invite him to lunch last week, so I didn't know about it?" Well, like, who could possibly do this? Have you ever felt that way? Do you know that that's the way you're supposed to feel? Right? If you look at the requirements of God and go, "Yeah, I mean, I sin, sure, but you know, mostly doing okay." If that thought ever crosses your mind, fall on your knees, right? Because that is not what the Scripture says at all, in any way, right? There ought to be desperation in our coming to the Lord because we realize, "Lord, I am utterly, utterly wicked, and I need You desperately. And in fact, You are the only one, Jesus, who has done everything that you're supposed to do," right? So the collective confession leads into a time of silent confession, where my encouragement is for you to take whatever we prayed, right? And individualize that, right? Is to say, "Yes, Lord, I too do this. Lord, forgive me because I too have left this undone. I've neglected to do what You require me to do." And to name that specifically. The specificity is a very important piece of this, right? Why? Couple of different reasons. One is, is that as long as I just say, "Woe is me. I'm a wretch. I know I don't deserve any of this," right? "Thank you for your forgiveness," and, you know, I move on. Whereas with specific things, I'm forced to deal face-to-face with God and actually make change, right? So if I say, "Oh Lord God, I know I'm supposed to be satisfied with my wife and not look at porn on the internet, but I find myself doing that, and I specifically confess that, then when I'm alone with my computer..." You're not supposed to do that. You just confess that, right? That that's an important part of that life change and transformation, that we need specificity, right? So that if in tax season, you're saying, "Oh Lord, I wasn't... You know, I didn't lie on my taxes last year, but I, you know, I didn't really pursue if I looked at everything I'm supposed to. Forgive me of that and help me." You know, that as you get ready to do your taxes, that's front and center. That's actually helpful. When you've been really nasty to your spouse, said some things that were hurtful, have you actually apologized to them specifically? But have you confessed that specifically, right? That's an important piece of what God uses to keep our tongues in check. So that the next time I'm tempted to fly off the handle and say things that I shouldn't, right, I've got that specific confession and repentance. So having that silent time of reflection isn't just a quiet time, right? It ought to be you doing business with the Lord. "Father, forgive me. Jesus, thank You that You've forgiven me for this, this, this specific thing." And then the proclamation of forgiveness. Again, this is not something that a Roman Catholic priest gives and absolves you, right? But it's a proclamation of forgiveness. It is the pastor, the shepherd reminding you who have just laid your soul bare before the Lord and confessed to specific things, to remind you from the Scripture, "There is therefore no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus," right? That that's not only a helpful reminder, but that's the Word of God that is powerful to bring about transformation. It's a two-edged sword, to go cut all the way to the marrow and say, "You're right. You are guilty, but now in Christ, arise. You have been forgiven and given His righteousness." So then, in that together, that there's this sense of us as a community, "Wow, wow, we're forgiven." And so we then pray for one another, that we pray for the needs of those in our congregation, that we pray for our brothers and sisters around the world, that we pray for the things that God has called us to be a part of, right? That that's, as we experience the wonder of the gospel at work in our lives, that that's what we experience. And then baptism is included there. If there are those coming for baptism, it fits here in terms of the imagery of baptism, right? Of our need to be cleansed, and we've come through this, and now, here's this new one who wants to be identified with the people of God who have been cleansed by Christ's blood and washed from their sins, okay? So let me stop there. Questions? Yeah?
Well, just a comment on Scripture, I think. It courses which is sent into Matthew 3:5 and 6. And it says, "Then Jerusalem was going out to him, meaning John, and all Judea, and all the district around the Jordan. And they were being baptized by him in the Jordan as they confessed their sins." And that word for confession there is "ex allegato", which is different than normal. It talks about ex out of, together, and lego to speak. So the idea is that not only were they confessing their sins individually as they're being baptized, but they were standing in the water or standing in a group confessing their sins together. There's this picture of corporate confession. In fact, a number of verses later, when it talks about Jesus, it specifically says, "He came out of the water alone."
Yeah.
And so, and then, the Spirit of God descended on them. So you get this picture of, there was something unique when Jesus was baptized, and that He came out of the water alone, where everybody else was confessing together. So I think that just adds to this argument of corporate confession.
Right, yeah, and a beautiful picture of the Trinity, right? Is that when Jesus is in the midst of that collective, corporate part of the people of God, who is right there with Him, right? The Holy Spirit, right? That His community is with the Father and the Spirit, right? The Father says, "This is My Son, in whom I'm well pleased." The Spirit descends, right? That the Trinity is there, and that the people of God are there, right? It's why biblically, I think it's impossible to make a case for private baptisms, right? "Oh, you know, hey, we're here at the lake. It's great. You know, we've got friends. Come and confess in Christ, you know. Let's get them in the water." No, let's get them to God's people and then get them in the water, right? So again, these things fit together. So that that picture of baptism is a picture of confession, right? And that there's a reason why communion historically has been done after the sermon has been preached, after we've received the message, and we say, "Okay, we're raring to go out there and do what God's commanded us to do. What do we need? We need to be fed. We need to be strengthened so that as we go out, we're able to do what we've just received from God in the marching orders to do." Does that make sense? So in terms of thinking about the various different elements, these things in the service, it's not just willy-nilly, "Well, we'll kind of, we'll put this one here, we'll put that one there." But there's this connection of what baptism does as a seal and sign of the covenant reality that fits most closely with confession and forgiveness and what we've just done in this section. Other thoughts and questions? Yeah, please?
And then, is that as we look towards becoming a church that holds up traditions, but is more outreach-based, we're talking about making the service more accessible to people who are uncertain.
Yeah.
A concern that I have is that this, it becomes bulky.
Yeah.
And not that the elements should not be part of it, but that they should be done in a streamlined way so that, you know, by the time we get to the sermon, we're not all this tired.
Sure.
And so that, as somebody who was thinking along those lines on the outreach team, it's like, how can we make this, how can we do these elements and make them done in such a way that's simpler so that people don't like, you know, what the church is, like two and a half hour long?
Right, right, yeah, yeah. And I think that's one of the key concerns that people have. And so biblically, the thing to come back to is, what's our mission, right? What are we trying to do? And what are the God-appointed means to accomplish that, right? So again, if I think of my workout setting, right? And I say, "Okay, trainer, please help me do these particular things," right? That workout's going to look different based on what I'm trying to do, right? And so what we find is, is that walking people through these things collectively reinforces what we're telling them in communicating the gospel to them one-on-one, right? And that our desire for simplicity or streamlined, you know, "Hey, we want this aerodynamic," right? Okay, but that's not what we find in Scripture. He's got other concerns that outweigh that simplicity. Bottom line for me is that I've found two things. One is that in doing these things, oftentimes, we think for young people, right? "Well, they're not used to all of this stuff, right? So let's just keep it basic and, you know, sing some contemporary songs and give them the gospel, and that's the..." Again, it's driven by a pragmatism that says, "You sell a car this way," right? And we're trying to sell them on Jesus, and so we want to do these kinds of things, right? So Charles Finney had made that into a science and said, "A, B, C, boom, you know, they'll come to Christ and we're good." And we know enough to go, "No, that's not a good approach." But actually, that idea often leads how we go about thinking about these kinds of things, right? So again, Chris and I have done lots of years of college ministry, and one of the things that we found was that, you know, there's lots of the folks who are the millennials today and the generation after them that have by and large rejected the older generation's way of doing those things, right? And what they've often rejected is this sense of, "We've got it streamlined, and here's the way that we do it." And rather have a deep appreciation for things that are older than their parents or grandparents, right? And so there's all this retro stuff. There's all this, "Wow, this is really cool, that this is something that came from 300 years ago or 1,000 years ago," right? And so I think actually, that reconnecting with the historic church's liturgy, if done well and explained, right? Can be actually attractive, and I've found to be very attractive to many college students and 20-somethings who've never experienced that kind of thing, and said, "Wow, that's, what's this all about?" right? And that there's more in engagement there, okay? So again, it doesn't solve all of those things, but I think it's the kinds of things that we want to be thinking about. So let me encourage you to read through the rest of this, and, you know, any questions that you have. You know, what we're trying to do in terms of going forward in 2020 is this section of the Repenting Together is something that you're going to see more involved and included in most every Sunday's worship service. And that we're going to have some time together to walk our way through that and experience that, and that you may have questions a month into it or six months into it that you don't have now, and we welcome those. But we're not, "Okay, this is what we're doing for the next 100 years." We're going to continue to work through that and pray through that and help us as a congregation to continue growing those things, okay? Good, yeah?
Today was the first day. I thought maybe the change in the order of worship had to do with the time of year, Christmas. So the fact that I know now that it's working towards permanency, to fill something that wasn't there, that was lacking, is important for me.
Yeah.
It's going to make me look more character.
Yeah, good.
And I was wondering if you have plans to announce it to the congregation? Because we're just...
Yeah, right. Sure, yeah, right. Yeah, so those are the pieces that we're going to... We're wanting to make sure that we're using all the different venues to talk about that, to encourage folks, to help people and teach people as we go through. So yes, we will be doing that. You know, Advent was a convenient time because there are some different things to kind of start in that and begin that. So yes, but that's a great, great thing that we will be doing, okay? Great, let me pray for us. "Father, thank You for Your goodness and grace to us. Thank You that You, the God of the universe, would invite sinners like us into Your presence, and that You've accomplished that, Lord Jesus, through what You've done in perfectly obeying everything that we were required to do and not do. That You have given us Your perfect righteousness with which we can not only come into Your presence, but come boldly. Pray that You would help us." And we do pray, Lord, that You would work in and through this transition as we learn some new things and rearrange some of the things in our collective worship service. Lord, that You would help people who are struggling with those differences. Change can be very difficult, and we pray that You would help us in that. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.